We're going to discuss the, I guess, the sidewalk we had last, uh, last...
I don't think I saw them, I think they were just sitting there.
Week ago, I guess.
Across the way.
And our best...
You can have my folder.
We got another chair in here, we got a couple of chairs if you want to sit down. Here. All right, now, are we ready? To discuss the sidewalk last week and a best possible location for the Asar property at, map 117, lot 52. Well, we've got, these were Bob's observations on what we did at the sidewalk. Did y'all get a chance to see that?
No, we haven't. I'm sorry, we couldn't come last week from New Mexico. My father passed away, so we wouldn't have been there. So, should I...
Uh, well, actually, yeah.
Yeah, I don't see one on there.
I'll be back, but...
There you go.
Anyway, let's just, Kenny, why don't you start because you had a talk with, or somebody else visited the site, right?
Uh, we're up on the site with Joey Anderson from York County Water and Soils, just to get his intake on it. We usually use him as a consultant on steep slopes and difficult properties. He was basically in the same consensus as I had, relocate the structure right behind the existing and with erosion control practices, the project could be done as we discussed.
What was the access, Kenny? The same thing that Scott was talking about last week?
Correct.
Was it, what do you call that? A lane or a driveway? What do you call that thing?
Temporary access. It would have to be put back afterwards, stump grindings throughout the whole process, and you can have a footpath up to six feet in there, whether they want it through where it is now or from where they would probably park it at the top. The septic can bring a set of stairs down. To me, that would be the better way probably for them permanently, but then that's up to the applicant.
What about Scott's notion of the, you know, the path that we walked down to access the camp? Wasn't that going to be the proposed access for an excavator?
Correct. Yeah.
They're gonna have to haul off...
In that particular site, I would store no soils on site, take haul away. You may be able to store a little bit, but really, there's no place for storage there.
And Joe, when you said six foot, is that applicable to the, let's call it...
That's when you dump. So, you would have to go in and dig wide enough, your excavator and your dump truck, and as you're digging, load the dump truck and have it hauled away instantly, and at the end of the day, put erosion control, the stump grindings down throughout the whole process. That's my way, I mean, that would be up to the contractor for his thoughts. And then, when you're done, bring the sand back in, put the slope back in place, put your stump grindings in on the erosion control mode, and re-vegetate.
And does anybody have, for Scott, are you having an estimate of the length of that little traverse of this slope?
Hasn't been measured yet. I would say it's probably...
How much?
Yeah, seventy-five to 100 feet.
Well, like, how many feet?
I don't think it's that long. That lot's only 150 foot of frontage, and we're only coming across it, we're going diagonally, but we're only coming across it half the way for that, half, three quarters of the way, to gain access. Then you can get down on the flat and work with it, tear down what's there, and clean up what's there.
Well, it'd be nice to know the length of that, I guess. Well, I'm kind of amazed that Joe was receptive today.
Okay, who is Joe?
Uh, ma'am, this isn't a public hearing, and you have a right to be here...
I'm sorry.
And listen to what's going on, but we don't, you don't have a right to speak at the meeting, all right? Unless we have a specific question for, you know, unless we have a specific question, which hasn't come up yet, but it might. The man that the code enforcement officer went down with works at the York County Soil and Water Commission, and oftentimes, when we have somebody who just does something to enlarge the size of their camp near the water or to move it, we send them to York County Soil and Water for a management plan to restore the property. And so, the engineer that does those plans is the one who came down with the code enforcement officer and looked at the site, and his recommendation was the same as the code enforcement officers', which was to move the camp back 20 feet, enlarge it its 30% from what the square footage is now, and clean up all the land in front of it.
Am I allowed to ask?
Not yet. Um, Tom?
Well, I guess I'm just fetching up early, earlier than usual. I was thinking about the stability of that slope, Kenny, when it was, if and when it's disturbed, and it seemed, on first glance, for moving from east to west, because we were, we were pretty close to the easterly boundary there, right, Scott?
The structure side of it?
Yeah.
Yes.
The slope does get less steep as you move to the west.
Correct.
You know, it kind of goes like so. But as you approach the house on that traverse of the hill that's being proposed, it seemed to me, for a good portion of that, you were exceeding the angle of repose of the material, of the gravel. And just, I just was sketching a little thing that shows it in a very rudimentary way. I mean, if you, if you stay within, with your cut and fill, that's going to enable the excavator on this ramp of land, of terrace that you're going to be creating, to move down to the site. If you're staying within the angle of repose, when you, when you throw that cut onto that downhill side of the bank, you're okay. But it seemed to me, for a good, good section of that lane, especially as you move easterly across the traverse there, you're exceeding the angle of repose of the material that you're taking out, and your cut bank is also going to exceed that. You're going to need some kind of means to retain it. I mean, this was looking at it as a layman, granted, but I've dug some foundations before, and tried to retain slopes before, and this, this was just a first take. I'd really like to get a better sense of what you are proposing on to take there before we sign up on it. But I'd be interested to hear what you and Kenny, and Joe especially, thought of that.
Basically, you're showing that, Tom, would be correct if we carried that road all the way over to where the house proposed area is to go.
Yeah.
You would be right, because you are getting steeper as you get farther closer to that property line. However, if you recall, when you came down to that property, coming across there, down that path, if you were walking down the path to the left-hand side, down towards the shore, it's very flat.
Because what?
You can get over there and then get an excavator down onto that and come down across to the structure and then work your way back in. So, we don't have to cut from the road...
On the exterior section.
All the way down to where that house is.
Okay.
So, that's exactly the issue when I was over there with, with Joe.
Were you guys, were you out there with Joe?
I, yes, I called Joe. I asked Joe to meet me out there.
What was his notion of the perpendicular to the slope approach of the pump line, the septic pump line?
He had, actually, he had, actually, didn't have any issues with it at all, as long as we kept it, stump grindings on it, as soon as it was opened up. Basically, open it, put your line in, backfill it, and put stump grindings. He did mention possibly putting some vegetation to it. He talked about some lures out and possibly putting small rows, but not continuously all the way up, perhaps rake it in a few slots going up to help get it vegetated back in, but he was actually fine with it.
And what is the proposal you're coming to us tonight in terms of the depth and width of that particular excavation?
Depth and width of which excavation?
Of the, of the septic line.
Uh, I mean, bucket width, whatever, you know, whatever he's using for bucket could be up to two feet wide, depth at least four feet.
And I guess that's one I was fetching up on in terms of feasibility, unless you, you heard of people doing this, but you would, you would lower a smaller excavator on cable and pull the damn thing uphill.
Yeah, the machine actually isn't going to, we're not going to run a machine, just so you know, and everyone here knows. The intention is not to run a machine down that steep bank from a septic system all the way down over the hill. It's to reach down from the top as far as that machine will possibly reach, and from the bottom reach up, and then if there's hand digging in between, then so be it. There's no intention to run a eight or nine-foot wide path up that slope. It's intended to get just a trench up through there, straight up.
It may be worth looking into mauling. We usually do it, or require, when you're going under a road, it'd be a bore under the road and then come back up.
Yeah.
It may be an easier solution.
It might be, it might be an easy solution, but the problem with the mauling in that particular gravel, some of it is rocks and moles, it's just gonna...
Kick it right out of the way.
Exactly.
Get it behind you.
It'll wind up a mile of road.
Kenny, can you explain that again?
What is that to me?
It's a go underground bore, radial control. We've seen a mobile home community where all the utilities needed to be replaced, the electrical and stuff, and you're setting them all down, and you'll bring it right up where you want to be, and it'll pull the wire in with you. I've never done it for septics and pipes and stuff, but...
Given the cobble that's seen there and the maul that was done...
Yeah.
It's my...
I think the rocks on the bottom is just an illusion. I don't think he did that big, which is that digging, and he called gravel.
So, but he was very well aware of the, and he liked the straight shot as opposed to crosshilling and taking all the trees out too. He liked that he thought it was a better idea to just go straight, straight up.
Scott, is there the concern about holding the hill as you work your way back? I mean, I know the original plan was to try to get back 20 feet. If you can't get back 20 feet, one of the reasons perhaps would be because of the rock being more extensive than you originally thought. The second one is the idea of holding that hill, and I think that's what Tom was looking to when he was talking about the road coming down. But now, in the case of where the house is going to go, what keeps that hill from just collapsing back down? And how, I guess making it even more of a question, how do you know how far to go so that that won't happen?
Can I ask you a question to preface that? Why bother, why bother moving the damn thing back?
Well, we always, on a best possible location...
No, I, I wasn't asking Chip, I was asking Scott.
Well, I tell Tom, listen, the reason we're doing this, the homeowner would probably like to leave it there, a best possible location. We always try and move it as back from, as far back from the water as can feasibly be done. So, it's us, it's Kenny, it's the town of Acton that told the homeowner and his contractor that we want the place moved back, if it would work.
And in fact, it probably is not going to be 20 feet, it's probably going to be in the area of like 14, maybe 14 to 16.
The width of the camp.
Well, the width of the camp, based on what we see going in.
Well, let's go on to Bob's question, because that's...
Yeah, sorry, your question was, what's going to hold the hill?
Well, how do you know how far to go before you say, oh, I go any further, you know, this hill may just kind of collapse down on me? You're saying now, instead of going 20, it's going to get to 14, okay, you know, that maybe is a better deal, I'm not sure, but seeing, in my mind, I guess, there's that still, that same question.
It's, it's depending on the type of soil, it's one of those things, as you work it, you find out exactly where you're up against as you move forward. You may have to displace more soil than you wanted in order to dig back as far as you have to go, and that's where this comes, you know, discussing. That slope does get steeper the farther back you go, and depending on how far back we go into it, how far back you want me to push it back will dictate how much I have to overdig that hill. And then, the foundation will hold, be designed to hold that load afterwards.
But you're also digging left and right.
Yes.
So, there's no foundation holding that disturbance?
No, that will have to be retained back with your erosion control after, and during, so it doesn't wash into the lake.
Do you see that the, it's worth moving it back? I mean, if the board were to decide to leave it where it is, wouldn't there be advantages in terms of diminished site disturbance there?
You're, yes, there possibly could be. You still have to get that trench up over the back of the hill, there's a few trees , but aside from that, it could very well, you're 14, 15 feet off the water at some point, so, but that's entirely up to, as we're trying to find out where its best location is.
Is there any concern about the road that runs through that property? That's our access.
I don't think so, not, not just yet. Um, well, so where is, where's the board? Any more questions? What's, what's the thinking?
Oh, I did have one question, Kenny. The other day, we were talking about a variance that would have to be granted, I forget what that was.
Who was that guy?
Yeah, we were debating about whether we could, we could...
Put the camp over the top of the hill, theoretically, that was the question you had.
Or at the brow of the hill or something.
Right.
And consider a variance on the road setback. Going with the notion of that it's most important to push it back from the water, and then you would, you would suggest that the Board of Appeals would never grant that variance. But then, you mentioned the other day that there was a variance needed on the septic setback. Is that, is that a Board of Appeals issue or is that...
No, it's my authority to grant the variance. So, they might have heard you about the state on that. And I feel that the structure at the bottom of the slope is protecting better than the structure at the top of the slope. You push it back to the top, you're going to have more disturbance there, and then you're bringing the pathway down to there too, disturbance wise, I don't know.
It still has to be cleaned up at the bottom. You know, we're going to end that.
We were trying to bring up that, moving the camp to the top of the hill issue, but I don't think that's what we're, we were talking more about the variance, trying to figure out.
If this was second, I think, this one we...
Yeah, that was previous to going up the site, we were just shooting it around. I don't think you were at the meeting when you, you weren't at the meeting, but yeah, I don't think that's what we were trying to get at now.
I just...
Trying to clean up the variance issue.
I just want to get clear on the variance.
Yeah.
So, if we go back to the three possibilities at the bottom of that paper, are there other possibilities? And if there are not, can we eliminate anything?
May we, may I suggest something? We just got to get an overview of existing camp conditions now in terms of utilities, that being water supply, sewage disposal, and, well, we don't care about electricity, I guess, but those two issues, I think, would be interesting to talk about in terms of what is and what could be. I'd like to stand as far back from this proposal as we could and consider not just what is permissible, but what is sustainable in terms of this being kind of precedent-setting thing on the lake, because this struck me initially, and it may, it may soften with time, it struck me initially as stretching the boundaries of what is, what is doable around the watershed because of the slope. But I think it's important, maybe, for the board to get a sense as a whole of those two issues, what was the water supply and how was the waste disposal handled? And I, I don't know what that's...
I thought the water supply was going to be one of those boogies that went out into the lake, right?
What was it?
Yeah, water's coming out of the lake.
Can Scott answer?
Well, presently, it's coming out of the lake, but there's no reason why they can't drive a point, so they can do a point where the shallow, shallow well is, is...
Yeah, still do have a way.
Yeah.
And what about waste disposal presently?
Well, presently, no idea if there's even a waste disposal site on site.
I think there's a chemical toilet.
Right.
I have no idea. They're, I have no idea what's there presently.
Is there a two-hauler or one-hauler there?
It's a chemical toilet in that camp.
How, Tom, to ask a question back, how does that have anything to do with regards to the removal of and the new septic system?
Getting, getting back to the notion of what is permissible and what is sustainable in terms of, this, and this is just my impression, first, faced upon first sight at glance at this thing, is that it's going to take quite a bit of soil disturbance, granted it may, may, may not be able to be addressed through erosion and sedimentation control. I think it's stretching that because of the slope. That's just my impression. And the more measures that you implement on site to upgrade the dwelling, the more soil disturbance you're going to get, the septic piping, whatever access is required down to the camp, and, and the decision of moving it versus just elevating it on, you know, in its existing situation.
The 30% expansion, Scott, is that on both sides and the end and back behind?
Uh, there, the print is still in the works, but it would be added to its width and slightly to its depth.
And a little bit with that?
Yeah.
Was the issue with, excuse me, moving it to the west by 50 feet, was the issue there septic, getting, getting the septic all the way across that hill?
It would be a longer septic run.
Well, why not, but composting toilet or something?
The site's capable of sustaining a septic system, so why would you not want a septic system?
Well, if it, if you could move it there to the, to the west and have a lot less disturbance in the process, the putting the septic in is going to create all that disturbance on the hill.
You still have to deal with the gray water before you move it.
Yeah. The idea is to keep stuff out of the lake, so certainly you can put ordinance in effect, but you certainly don't want someone throwing a rock out of gray water out the window either.
Right. Am I allowed to ask a question?
Um, not just yet, but maybe when we get towards the end.
Kenny, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Given the...
From the board.
Go ahead.
Given the site, and there is a approved septic system on it, designed right now, is there any reason not to utilize an actual septic system opposed to some other system?
No, I think I prefer the septic system in the location where it is, and I think if you kept the house right behind the existing one, then when you come out of that house, the disturbed area from the old place that has to be regraded and re-vegetated would be the least amount of damage to the site, the least amount of impact. You go shifting it to the right or the left, they're going to try to impact the lake down or from the side or something else.
So, you're saying that the disturbance is going to be confined to the footprint of the house and on straight up the hill, as opposed to a disturbance coming across and down at the same time?
Well, the disturbance in the, where the old camp was, they'll have to clean that up and re-vegetate it, and if you put the camp right behind it, when you re-vegetate that area, that will you put your access to the lake. If you move it over to the side, they're still going to go for an access for the lake somehow. And if that's either it's going to be straight down through, you know, from the camp to the water, or back it around or something, you know, but if, if the camp is right behind the existing, their access is going to be right through where the old camp was.
And the location of the camp is somewhat stabilized behind it?
Behind it, yeah.
Well, yeah, the foundation will be designed to stabilize behind it. It's going to be a big old demon crosswalk.
That doesn't seem like an added expense to the, to need that added structural input of a stronger, beefier foundation, you know, in setback, you know, because there could be some force of...
It's what you have to do though, because...
If we moved it back, they would need that additional...
Well, yeah, if they were going to leave it there, they'd still have to put a foundation underneath it, correct?
They wouldn't have to. That's up to the board to decide.
Well, no, that's...
It's up to them.
Is it?
Yeah.
Well, I'm not sure. It says in the zoning law, it says...
We're not designers.
No, but I guess it's not. Um, whatever.
The owner has the option to put the foundation under it, the town just needs to tell him where to relocate the non-conforming structure to the best spot on the lake. Ideally, would be to get him 100 feet back from the lake, which those don't even come through the board, because we've got them to be a conforming structure at that point. So, you guys just deal with the ones that can't get back here on the 100-feet zone.
Give me 250 feet.
100.
100 to set back.
It's 100 from the water. 250 is the shoreline district.
Right, okay.
But anything further than 100 feet back, we don't have to necessarily worry about as far as the location, it just goes through camp.
Okay.
Anything we want to do. And we, as a rule, try and make them less not conforming, which is pushing them back as feasibly possible.
Usually, what we'll do is set a benchmark down on the water, a piece of rebound with a marker on it, set some cross points, so we know exactly where that point is, because if we told them 14 feet, 18 feet from where the old was, from the shoreline, the jagged shoreline, you'll have all types of different areas, we'll set a point and measure back from there. And that's to the closest point of the structure, you can tell the hang's dirt edge.
Stairs or no?
Front stairs is basic set of stairs, three-by-three landing, set of steps down, every example.
All right. So, the structure itself. Uh, anyone else here? Scott had to stand up, and I have a question afterwards, I guess.
I'm actually also.
From, from what you guys saw on your second visit, tenth visit back there the other day, on the proposal again of the, of the excavator path that traverses the slope, I'm, I'm still kind of fetching up on that, because my, my recollection is that for at least half the length of that traverse, you have that issue that I raised in the drawing of the, the steepness of that slope is such that you, you're going to have quite a, an unstable cut and a, and a bench that would have, I don't know how you're going to, I don't know how you're going to do that physically, I don't know.
Do you, you don't operate on a fill, you cut the whole, the whole path, the excavator's cut, it's not that you fill that on the side?
Correct. If, if you didn't have the water as an issue, you could cut uphill, throw the dirt downhill, and you wouldn't have to cut in as deep, but in this case here, you're not going to want to throw any downhill, you're not going to want to disturb that downhill, you're going to want to tuck into that bag as, as much as possible.
How wide's it going to have to be to get the excavator?
You probably want 12 feet at least minimum, and maybe the dump truck to get in there, maybe be the larger item, and then...
A dump truck?
Stump grinds that down through.
And were you envisioning a concrete truck as well for the foundation?
I assume they'd pump that from the top.
They'd pump it from the top for that?
Yeah.
I did notice one thing in our existing erosion and sedimentation control in the shoreline of Resource Protection Districts that I wanted to read.
What are you?
It's page 45.
It's a Resource Protection District.
Shoreland and Resource Protection Districts, yeah. Just at the top of the page...
Just at the top of the page, item two, which is, I can't really get there, I guess. It says, "In order to create the least potential for erosion, development shall be designed to fit with the topography and soils of the site. Areas of steep slopes or high cuts and fills may be required, should be avoided wherever possible, and the natural contours shall be followed as soon as possible." And it also says right at the beginning, item number one, under erosion and sedimentation control in the shoreline Resource Protection Districts, "All activities in the shoreline Resource Protection Districts which involve filling grading, excavation, or other similar activities which result in unstableized soil conditions," which I think we're probably gonna have, "and which require permits, shall also require written soil and erosion and sedimentation control plan." It seems like this, there was another thing I saw in, just in the, what are they called? Goodanger Design Standards?
Site plan review?
Well, this one you
That's where the good neighbor stuff is, site plan.
And you would never consider it a problem?
Good neighbor's stand alone.
Oh, is it?
Yeah.
All right.
Five-eleven.
Well, we could stick with the first one, if anybody had anything to say about it. I got a few spots in here that I just looked through to see what was applicable to the work at hand.
Can I ask a question? Ken? In something like this, Ken, would you get a drawing of some detail to?
We'd get one for anything in the shoreline zone. It could be as simple as a squiggly line that says silt fence. In this case here, we'd go over it with the applicant, and then also York County would have a drawing on this one. If it's simple enough for some of the projects, Joe Anderson will do a walkthrough and say, throw some stuff in, put a couple plantings there on flat plots. This particular one, Joe would end up doing a drawing.
Well, let me just ask you what may appear to be a foolish question. If Scott and the sites have to develop a plan, prior to your giving, signing off on this, is that, am I stating that correctly?
A lot of times I'll write a permit pending state approval, they'll need a permit from the DEP. We want an erosion control plan and a replanting plan from York County, because you don't wanna, we could've required them to go get the stuff now, and they come back and you say no or whatever, and so it's tough sometimes.
But being layman and being volunteers, it's also tough, speaking for myself, to make a decision on something that I see is gonna, and as you've described it, with a twelve-foot wide pathway, which I guess is temporary, they're never, it's never proposed to have a vehicle put down like that.
No, you have to revegetate and put it back in. That's kinda karma. A lot of times they'll do that for the well truck, you'll have to get the well truck down, because the well always goes down by the lake and the septic goes as far back. So quite often they have to build a temporary road to get the well truck down in there and then revegetate and pull the road back out.
I guess what I was getting to is it's hard, it would be hard for me to make a decision on this, which would seem preliminary, before I had a better grasp of the impacts that would occur.
Well, my question would be, aren't we trying to decide the best possible location for the house, not necessarily how we're gonna get to the house? And whether we're gonna walk down the set of stairs to it?
No, no. I'm with you, Scott, but I, rolled into that is the whole notion of level of impact that this project is gonna create and what it's gonna do to the lake. I mean, that's a primary interest of the board, I hope. And I just, I guess I'd like to get a more realistic assessment of what's gonna happen on site to make this feasible, as it's being proposed again.
But Ken just gave you a list of documents that, and the DEP is gonna be involved.
At what level is the DEP involved?
I'll give you a permit by rule for it, requiring mostly documentation. And in that permit by rule, you have to state why you can't work outside of the resource, they'll go back seventy-five feet. And I think I would answer the application if you told them to keep it in the area, is the town told me I couldn't move it back. If you're thinking not to move it back, I would almost deny the permit if I was the DEP. I mean, we move them back all the time consistently, and people are not very happy about it. If this goes ten feet from the lake, we're gonna have a lot of people calling my office that have been required to move their camps back eighty to a hundred feet.
Yeah, but I think we, I hear
Every site is different.
I hear what you're saying.
Yeah.
And this, I mean, this is a radical site, I don't know if there's any other way to phrase it, but.
Access is the only thing that really makes it difficult. The steep slopes are dealable, it just takes money to do it right and stabilize it during the process. And if they weren't on Great East Lake, they probably wouldn't be doing it.
I got a couple more things I was looking at here that I could read out, if people might
What page you wanna?
I was just looking at the relocation, I was just gonna read what it said in there on page six. I could read the whole paragraph or just part of it.
Why don't you give us the gist of the thing?
Okay, I'll refer it on the line. It's page six here, "In determining whether the building or the relocation needs a setback to the greatest practical extent, the planning board shall consider the size of the lot, the slope of the land, the potential for soil erosion, the location of other structures on the property and on adjacent properties, the location of the septic system, and other on-site soil suitable for septic systems, and the type and amount of vegetation to be removed to accomplish the relocation."
Have those all been considered?
Well, those are the things we're talking about, but, I mean, just talking about them, they're all applicable on this site, that's for sure. All the things of interest that are noted in here are all applied to this site.
Most times I won't even look at the structures on the lots, because that is a problem when you have to move back past the other camps. I don't usually look at that when I'm doing my pre-site plan, because those camps are coming back someday too, and it does happen all the time. And I think, were trees running there too, right?
I have some underlying rock trees, you wanna read them?
No, just as far as the best possible location, again.
It says here, under one point, yeah, under relocation, page six, A, "Replace trees must be planted no further from the water or wetland than trees to be removed."
With the best possible location as far as, one of the requirements to look at the trees and stuff, and I don't, usually we don't look at that either. It's in there, it's the state guidelines, but trees for vegetation is, they're allowed to remove the safety hazards, which most of those we looked at on that property are all safety hazards, and they can remove almost all the trees that are not just for safety hazards at.
I think there was a little bit of discussion as to, you know, whether the stumps on all those trees should be removed in terms of the stabilization of the bank.
Yeah, you can't pull any of the stumps out, you can grind them below grain, but the stumps all would have to stay, except for the ones in the excavation area of the house.
So the oaks behind the hill would be ground level, except for the ones that would be
A little bit back.
Yeah.
The oaks would be big butts.
Yeah.
It would be a safety hazard, huh?
I don't think they'd grind them, I doubt they'd grind them.
Those big oaks on the hill? Just leave them there, is that the plan?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's good to leave them, I suppose for sure, those are big trees, there's not much growing next to them right now.
Did Joe say anything about, like, needing, you know, he mentioned the basic erosion control, but anything that would kinda go above and beyond that?
Once he drew the plan, he'd be looking at taking care of the stormwater off of the camp. It's a small camp, so you're not talking about a tremendous lot, and I think just drip line trenches around it with stone, and if the path was all erosion control mulch on it, the stump grinding's on the path, you wouldn't have anything really there for stormwater generated noon that wasn't there before. And you'd be able to take care of the runoff from the camp that now is going into the lake.
This may or may not be part of our purview, but I'll bring it up anyway, see if somebody slaps me down. What about vehicular access over these rights of way and parking?
That's a civil matter, has nothing to do with my department. I did notice when we were at the site that it looked like the asphalt on the road was, well, I guess old, it's been used, you know, and it seemed like if equipment started moving in and out of there, that asphalt would be further deteriorating. Did we take that into consideration? I mean, what do people think about that?
That's beyond scope, but that's up to the owner of the property, the person that wants to use it. When you deal with lakefront, some of the projects' cost isn't an issue. He could repave that hill for five thousand dollars if that's what it takes him to be on the lake. Great East is a desirable lake. It's up to the owner of the land and the contractor. If it was me working, I'd probably throw again, erosion control mulch all over that hill and drive on that and sweep it up when I was done and work with the owner of the property. The neighbors all have to get along there or
I did have another question that maybe people in the audience could address. I was wondering if a lot of water did go down that little paved section of the hill during storms and such, if there was a lot of water traveling down that, I'm getting some nods, so just in my head, I was thinking maybe that water would start to, during the work, would start to compound with possible disturbances on the slope, because you already got a flow going there, and if it kinda jumped off to the side and go down to the lake, you know, there would be a lot of disturbed ground during the actual processes of, you know, getting in and out.
That'd be a good project for the acting wakefield youth conservation group to actually take a look at that, do a study, come up with a plan, as simple as, again, at the end of that, or even down through the hill itself, put some razor blades in, some rubber razor blades, to deter it to the side, get some crushout and get that stormwater into the ground.
So who would be paying for this? That's our right of way to our property and to the noon's property.
It's not a right of way for us, we all need.
You all need, but, okay, so the right of way goes down
To your place, that's correct.
Well, the contractor would have to maintain the
The excess
Whatever, yeah, right.
Is that true?
Well, I'm wondering how we're gonna get to our property this summer, whenever construction starts. We're not gonna be able to get in.
Why wouldn't you not be able to get in?
With dump trucks going up and down and hauling dirt, and considering it's an asphalt road and there are weight limits.
At this point, I'm unsure when this is actually gonna take place.
But there are weight limits on roads, and that asphalt road doesn't meet any criteria for heavy trucks.
It's a private road, it doesn't come under the town's jurisdiction, it's wholly owned by one of the evoters. And if there were to be any issues, it would be between the owners of the road, the evoters, and whoever would be doing work on that, on the road. That's where that whole issue would lie, not with the planning board here, and whether we decide to have this guy move his camp back, you know, fourteen or sixteen or eighteen feet.
A lot of the problems with the right of ways is the description of use. Back in the forties, it's just a right of way and you're able to go to your camp. Now you've gotta look at, can I bring my car to my camp? Because the owner of the right of way could say, doesn't say that, and it's quite often a civil matter, we see all the time, that they may not have the right to bring a vehicle, they may not have the right to bring power down, they may not have the right to bring utilities through, and it's got civil written all over, but that's nothing of our regulations.
Out of our valley way.
So how did we address it then?
You talked to the homeowners and the evoters.
We are an evoter.
Well, the other evoters and whoever owns the property.
We are an evoter, and these are the other owners of the property.
Well, then, they're right there, and you can talk to them. Okay, if he wanted to demolish the camp and rebuild the camp exactly where it is?
You have to give him authority where to build it. That's the question, that's really the only question we're here for tonight, is how, where do you want that camp, how many feet back from the water? The only time we moved it left and right was if they were too close to the property line, and we, once they meet their setbacks on the side, the building envelope is wherever you determine it.
Go with Ken's recommendation from Joe Anderson's agreement with that?
Yeah.
Maybe reduce my original twenty down to eighteen or sixteen, but I still think there's more than just behind that camp, a couple of feet anyways.
Well, it's gonna determine once he gets in there, right?
You could come back and say, we've hit ledge, or we've hit this, we've hit that, and come back to the board and say, and we've done that before with a couple of properties from Elson Valley that they've come in, they've got into it, and they've said, oh, you know, we've gotta do, we've gotta stick over to the side a little bit and do the site inspections, but most of them, on these old camps, on these tough lots, the camps aren't in the best spot as they are, you know, without foundations, but.
There's no chance of hitting water.
If he moved it back, they may hit it on the frost wall perhaps in the front, but those would be under subgrade anyways.
Somebody, you know, he can't hit rigs on these hills.
If we were to make a recommendation for a distance, would you still be comfortable with twenty, would you rather pick sixteen or eighteen, or would you rather say, at least
Sixteen.
This?
Sixteen would be with his eaves and overhangs, they'll give the structure back a couple more if he, sixteen from the original camp location.
All right, so your recommendation would be like a minimum of sixteen feet back from where the front building is now to where the front of the new placement would be?
Correct.
Then they're gonna move sixteen, right?
What was that?
Then they'll move sixteen if that's
Without coming back to talk to the board. That'd be two feet behind the original camp from the roof, which really would be roughly four feet back from the original camp for the frontal structure, the foundation.
And there's less, they'll be going into the hill a little bit less, and it appears as if there has been some sort of a concern for some of the board as far as, you know, going back too far into the hill, how unstable is it gonna become? Yat da yat da, so maybe that's a, you know, a better compromise.
Kenny and or Scott, with that proposal, where would new cellar floor elevation be relative to existing grade?
Right behind the camp would be your floor slab.
Correct.
It's going up.
Which would elevate the camp approximately maybe two feet.
Just if you see this.
Not yet, I can go.
The plan's to be a walkout basement more than
Correct.
Yeah, yeah. So, has everyone else seen this?
So we, we're pretty clear what Ken's recommendation is, to move the camp sixteen feet back. The closest point to the water would be, the front of the house would be sixteen feet away, all right, whether it's a gutter or the overhang or what have you. Now, seeing as how you people all did make the effort to get here, if you have a question that hasn't come up or has been addressed yet, you can go ahead and ask it now, but all we're dealing with is the best possible location for this camp. We don't deal with road issues, because it's a private road. The only reason that a path is gonna be enlarged on this property is to get the excavator down there to knock down the old one and dig the cellar hole for the new one, and to dig the septic reaching up, and then at the top, reaching back. If the house was demolished, a road would have to be dug to bring an excavator down there to knock it down, and for a truck to haul the stuff out, so So it's gonna have to have some type of drive or some type of road down there just to knock the place down and to clean the site up. So that's a given. It will be cleaned up when it's done and turned back into a, not a driveway, a path, correct? Yeah. So, does anyone have anything that still hasn't been addressed yet? Yeah, just tell us who you are.
I'm Jeanne. I'm on the road. I'm concerned about the dry, this widened road because I don't see where it can start because the pipe's right at the railing on the top of the path. That's the edge of the property line. And I don't see how it won't, if you try to dig back from that pipe to get across the grade, which is going down, or down like this, you're gonna have to cut the road out to get back far eight feet or 12 feet.
Undermine.
Well, not even undermine. You can't physically do it without like diving over and then starting in down for... But I can see, you know? I mean, we all walked down a little slippery and steep.
Jeanne, help us understand. Where are you, are you located at the septic or are you located with temporary access?
At the western edge of the property line where the road, the access to the, where the truck...
Where the railing.
Where we walked down. How close, just, because I can't, when we initially made that traverse with Scott, I was unclear as to where that property line, the Wesley property line was.
It's right at the top where the first post is of the, there's a little walk, a little rail so that the little old lady wouldn't slip down the bank and...
Little old men, too.
Or little old men. So, anyway, I'm just like, you know, really concerned about that. And, you know, because that's our property line is right, is about maybe four feet from the edge of the tar.
It's interior to...
Toward the lake.
Right.
On that side. And when it rains, you can see the...
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. Can the, can the excavator and dump trucks get down to this site and stay on the property to do it?
No, they're on the Noons property. The right of way, as I see it, the right of way, which is the Noons property, has, you have to, it's the only access to their, lower half of their property, the other person's residence and this residence.
Right.
So it's access to three residences. I, interestingly enough, own in a similar situation, and I have probably upwards of 30 families that utilize my property on a daily basis to gain access to all their camps and so forth. So there is certainly something that, aside from this, once this is done, best possible location, it's only common courtesy that I talk to them and find out what exactly they would like to do and what we can try to work out to gain access and what they want to have done to that access when we're done. Because I have no desire as a contractor to wreck anybody's private property. And if it is damaged in the doing of the site work, then bring it to... In this case, certainly would wind up being a better situation than previously is there now. The rainwater you're talking about, that races down over that hill right now, it's doing it now whether I work there or not. And when I work there, it's actually going to be better sustained if one of the ideas that I had, and I've only briefly mentioned to Mr. Noon about this, it's nothing has been confirmed whatsoever. But in the past, what we have done is put down stump grindings or just actual tailings, it's referred to, as, and they're actually stumps before they're actually run through the grinding. You put down tailings, and Ken mentioned something about a welder rig. Those are about 70,000 pounds. And we have used just tailings over a site that you couldn't drive a four-wheel draft pickup truck in without it sinking out of sight. You lay these tailings down right over the top of the surface. You back that 70,000 pound truck across it, and you can literally see the truck will just sink down in, and it just sinks down across and filtrates across it. You back in and do your job. When you're done, those tailings are removed. Similar idea is to what I would want to do on that road. However, that road is, that is probably an inch, inch and a half at best of asphalt, probably 30, 40 years old with roots coming out of it. So certainly, any one of us driving down there, if we came up out of there in a hurry, would have damaged it. So it certainly would be, you know, it needs an improvement. If, well, we would need an improvement based on us working in there. And you're right, that approach angle, there is something that has to happen in there. It is, it is a tight, unique area. And from what I saw of their property markers, of course, it has not been surveyed, but that I know of, there's steel pipes all across there, and I'm not making any judgment calls at all. To me, it looks like it's all they'll land.
Right.
So that, that area is certainly gonna have to be cut away in order to gain that access. And it's certainly something that I need to have a conversation with. I'm dressed with them, absolutely.
Ken, will we be able to get our car over those tailings too?
Oh, absolutely. It's not, it's not like you're driving through the wild foots with big stumps and all that. And to answer, I'm not sure of your name or anything, I'm sorry. I'm Scott. Call out, I own Ash Cove Construction, and I've been, well, not necessarily hired yet. I'm looking at doing this job for somebody. And there may be some, a couple of times where you may be coming out, there may be a truck going out or coming in. But certainly, complete professionalism and you would be able to gain access to your place in and out. There may be a truck sitting there when you come up to go, and certainly, if we see you, we'll instantly move it. If we don't, then we'll accommodate getting you so you can get in and out. But there would be no pile of dirt in the road that you wouldn't be able to drive in by.
Anyone else have any questions or concerns?
I do have a question.
What?
Your name, please.
My name is Sheila Sargent.
All right.
I own the camp. It says in here, each of these possibilities were allowed for a 30% increase in square footage.
Right. That's the state law.
Okay, but it does not mean when it's that close to the water, you can't exceed the footprint of the house. We've been through this. We are at the bottom, we're like 15 feet from the water on both sides. We were not allowed to change the footprint of our house. They told us we could go up, but not expand the footprint. So where is this 30% increase, plain B?
It's, I believe it was gonna be in the width of the house, is that?
Width and depth.
And that is changing the footprint of a house.
Oh, absolutely, right.
I think, Ms. Sargent, I'm just guessing from what you said. I think it was because in your particular situation on the peninsula there, by expanding to the side, you would have been increasing your nonconformity by getting closer to the water.
Which you can't do.
No, we wouldn't. If we'd gone out the peninsula or the other way and up the hill, that would have been increasing the footprint if we had gone as any closer to the water.
Oh, okay.
Well, as long as you don't go closer to the water, you can increase your footprint up to 30%.
Unless you're separate.
Yes, I'm gonna see what approach I said.
I just don't know when all this changed because that was what we were told.
1980.
Yep.
1989.
We've passed papers in 1990, and we were told specifically by Town Hall that we could not change the footprint of our house. We could add up...
That, that may be, and, you know, not having, not seeing exactly what it was that you wanted to do with the property, I couldn't really tell you why they said that. My guess would be that if you got closer to the water on either of the three sides, they would not allow you to do that. So they would not allow you to go closer to the water on this side of the peninsula or this side or towards the front as long as any part of your place is within 100 feet of the water, which your whole place is.
But we could have gone out toward the point, it's more than 100 feet up that way. And we could have gone up the hill, it's more than 100 feet. And we were told we couldn't do it.
And, and that's what happened, but...
So we now can do that? If we'd like to add on, we can do that now?
I don't know what your situation is, so I couldn't tell you. I'm just, this place, the law says if you're within 100 feet of the water, you can increase your square footage or your volume by 30%, but you cannot go any closer to the water than you already are. And that includes, that's the point of your building that is the closest to the water. That's an overhang, that's a gutter, the closest part of your building. Not your kitchen and not your wall, but the closest part of your building to the water, you cannot go any further than what that is. So if you want to do something with your camp, come in and talk to code enforcement, and he'll look at your specific situation and tell you what you can or cannot do. But as far as what happened in the past, I, you know, I don't know what to tell you other than it's done. So any other questions or comments?
Is there a barge on Great East Lake?
A barge?
Yeah.
You should know that, Mr. Noon.
I don't know that, Mr. Noon, I'm sorry. I don't own property in Great East.
Couldn't we get some big martini boats together and bring this excavator over?
Isn't there a barge? I've never seen it.
There was one that came from Swift Pond once for a small project because there's no islands there, so you don't have that need. It was just, all it really was was the potty boat center out there. He just had a small machine on it.
All right. Ken's recommendation is, what was it, 16? The closest point of the building would be 16 feet away from the water?
Correct, move back from the front.
16 feet further back.
Correct.
Yes. Yes.
I'll make a motion. I'll second it.
Any further comments or questions?
If you haven't seen the site.
I've seen it for every meeting.
No, no, he's just kidding, he's just kidding.
Oh, no.
No, well, you are, it doesn't make any difference. It's Tom.
Tom, I took the minutes in the first meeting that described the site. I have looked at the town maps, I have looked at Google Earth. I feel fully equipped to vote.
It's up to me who gets the vote, and I say she's a regular member and she can vote.
If she wasn't at the same position.
It, Tom, it doesn't, right, it's not mandatory, it's not mandatory for a vote. Let me just go to a workshop. I would like to point out in the defense of the ultimate that when we went to the main municipal association workshop, they did say that, you know, it was best if the members voting on a subject were the ones who were the most informed and fully aware, you know, that had been on the site walk or whatever the instance was at that time. But I do remember that being mentioned. Best, it didn't require it, and as far as our ordinance says, I decide who gets the vote. And I don't have a problem, if Jessica thinks that she has enough knowledge about this, then I have no problem with her voting. And I might add, we've done dozens of these, and you people don't want to go out for site walks anymore. You take Ken's recommendation on some pictures, and the pictures don't always tell the story. Now, we've had other site walks for cell towers. We've had site walks for subdivisions, and I was the only person that showed up. And you people then vote on that subdivision without ever being out there. So don't anyone start saying all of a sudden, oh, wait a minute, all right? Now, any further?
I was there with the judge.
The subdivision on Point Road, nobody else came out there but me and the, and the engineer. Be that as it may, any further discussion on Ken's recommendation? All those in favor, raise your right hand. One, two, three. All opposed? One. I'm not voting, I don't need to.
He didn't.
All right, so it passes, what was it, 3 to 1?
Yeah, yeah.
All right.
I need bulk of the board to do, you know?
So we're all set. Thanks very much. Good luck. Thanks so much for coming, everybody.
Ken, can we get an update on this?
We got one more. Okay, best possible location, 130 West Shore Drive, tax map, 123 slash 32 John Herbert Floyd.
Camp Inc.
Inc? It's not on my list. Is it one of those LLCs?
No, it says Inc.
It's a demo-damaged, oh, demolished, the Irish kind replaced with seasonal cottage on Foundation Walkout. A seasonal cottage? Really?
They want to...
Is this a no insulation deal or?
No insulation, seasonal cottage. The state has an exemption, if you call it a seasonal college, cottage, that goes till June 8th, I think, this year, unless they've changed something. Yeah, with the exception, you can call it a seasonal cottage. Disconnect the water after October and you're exempt from the energy codes. So they're trying to get this through under that exemption before the law sunsets at the first week of June.
What is the advantage?
No insulation.
But they don't have a seasonal cottage.
Well, then that's all it is. It's similar to the one we probably just reviewed. For the one we just reviewed, it would probably always be seasonal, nobody would be down there in the winter, it's hard to get into. If they ever did make it year-round, they'd have to then continue to insulate and finish off the camp.
All right, so what's this guy's deal?
Pictures are coming around.
Is there a little map or something?
Yeah.
Yeah, there is, but I'll tell you where it is. You can't tell where it is on this picture.
This is our, this location on the, in the town. Doesn't that show how far it is from the lake?
I can't even, no.
Well, I don't mean how far in from the lake, I mean where, who are we talking?
West Shore Drive?
I know West Shore Drive, it's a long road.
You have a 130 is? It's right down, you know, a plus from... 125. Okay, how far is it from the water now?
The thing went that way.
Oh. Subback was 25 feet, subback will be 44 feet.
Is he in the new septic?
They have a state-approved septic already.
And...
That's a good question.
They're increasing 30%?
Correct.
What's the sign?
Somewhat flat. There's a retaining wall that steps down right behind the old camp. They're gonna stuff it back behind that and use that retaining wall as the walkout, kind of.
Oh, so that's gonna try and...
No, they're gonna keep it, but where that retaining wall was, once they go behind it, that'll actually be the walkout, kind of. It'll be all concrete, re-vegetated.
All right. So the proposal is to go from 25 to 45?
Why is it 45 instead of...
The septic on the backside and the tank and the area back there.
I thought you didn't say 44, excuse me.
44.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
And the driveway is the same?
I didn't say anything.
No, just maybe.
Driveway stays the same, fairly flat right now, just existing.
Yeah.
So what's the negative side of this thing, Ken? Why is this an issue other than the fact that it just wants to move it and increase it by 30%?
It's, it'll still be a non-conforming structure, that's why it goes through the plan board.
We're trying to make it less non-conforming by moving it back. Anything within 100 feet, if they wanted to demolish it and start over, if they want... Demodulate and start over, if they wanna add on to it, we have to try and get it as far back from the water as we can. State law. And it's in our ordinance as well. If it was outside a hundred feet, it'd just be code enforcement.
Can I be retained walls behind the existing camp?
Yeah.
Is there a picture of it in there?
Not a good one.
No, I didn't really see him.
Does the walkout basement account as a part of the thirty percent?
The whole, uh, foundation is exempt if they go through the process of best possible location.
The thirty percent, is that just footprint or is that through the second street?
It's cubic feet volume in square foot floor area. So there would be multiple floors, a deck would be floor area, but no volume.
So you got two ways to go.
You can't exceed either one, but you could have balances on it though. And that started in nineteen eighty-nine. Anything done since nineteen eighty-nine is calculated.
Any other, uh, interesting features to this?
We've moved both neighbors back about the same distance. At least we got a floral.
Are you planting those trees?
Um, yeah.
I mean, they have to do something with it, right?
Uh, the camp was destroyed during Hurricane Irene from the trees. And they're just getting through the insurance companies now.
Also, the trees came down?
Yeah, just during the camp. The insurance company wanted to basically pay them for what was there, similar to the last place we just went out with, which isn't much, but. Uh, I believe they did have, uh, code updates in their policy. Which when, if you've got updates in your policy, then your insurance company would have to rebuild it to today's standards. If you just have replacement costs, then they're just going to give you the money for what was there.
Really?
Yeah, two-by-fours, four-foot outside, no insulation inside, no foundation, so it's a, it's a big difference in your policies.
So the theory with retaining wall and these, these park there?
Just, it's right behind the old camp and it's just filled with leaves and.
Yeah, I mean, they park up a moment.
Exactly, yep. Yeah, so from West Shore all the way in, it's fairly flat. You want me to hold it for you?
Yeah, I could, I could need to.
Let's see.
Go to the drugstore and get some better glasses. Oh, and this is, this is a regular camp to it.
Yeah.
Wow, too bad.
There's five family members that all have.
Oh, good. Those are always fun.
I've only dealt with, uh, four, so.
Wow. Holy smokes, look at that. Wow, what a trip.
Um, a lot of West Shore Drive had a lot of tremendous, um, tree damage from Hurricane Irene.
Really?
Um, I only peeked down at around forty-five, fifty miles an hour of the wind. I think the fight about it had the same reading. It just came from an odd direction.
And these look as if, you know, their wood systems were, you know, just all flat. Well, they're right next to the waters. They don't have.
Yeah, on the island, just similarly on that side.
Yeah, yeah, just it came.
You can tell the retaining wall is right behind you. Cause this is higher than. I wanted to see the pictures for the, uh. Well, you can't see, but you can tell that it's right back here. This is it, because it's higher than the level of the camp. And you can, or here on this side, you can see how, uh, the lane goes up. So it's gonna go up and get around. Just toss us back to Ken when you're done. Alright, so, uh, where are we? Uh, do we have a motion? You want to take a sidewalk? What, what do you guys wanna do?
We accept Ken's recommendation.
One second. Uh, any further discussion? The standard boilerplate of, uh. Okay, uh, yes. Alright. All those in favor, aye? All opposed, nay? Done deal. The minutes? Take about thirty-five minutes, thirty minutes. Oh, good. I thought it was still too small. And. Did you go any further on the margins? Why don't you make some paragraphs? Look at this. There's no paragraphs.
Oh, come on. I'm just kidding. Yeah, please. Jeez.
Do I still have a site plan out there?
Not from me.
How good? No, I'm not.
I, I passed it. I gave it, yeah. Now, why did you, uh? Why'd you retell us this, like this?
Cause that was, the time is on.
What are you saying? I can't believe we got all this in and we were still adjourned by eight thirty. We don't have to run it. See who wasn't here. Oh, everybody's here. So I'll take a motion from anybody.
I got a.
Bob, question? Well, wait. Let's get a motion out here.
Man, I think it's, it's minor, but it's.
Nothing is minor. What we're dealing with, two negatives. Perpetual, uh.
Documentation.
Documentation.
We keep it to life.
How do you handle it?
Kenny, how do you make up that?
I made up, okay.
No, Mr. Paladino.
Mr. Brown?
Mr. Paladino.
Oh, I'm not sure. I'm hoping for the minutes to be approved so I can see how I'm, gee, keep me going.
Oh, uh. He's going to give us a, uh, a guest estimate on. Rewriting it into our ordinance. And maybe making some bits a little easier to, to understand. But not take anything out that is.
Inoffensive.
Yeah, right. And, yeah, he'll, he'll give us an estimate on how much time he thinks it'll take. He did give us, uh, did he, did he, I copy for him? He gave us a, like a three-page quick summary of how we could throw some of this stuff in that we already have and. How it applied to this. So he's been dealing with it enough that that should come back within, maybe before the next meeting. We still may want to. Talk about, you know, talk about this some more before we decide to have to go ahead and do that, if that's what the board wants to do. You know, we may still wanna stand alone or, like, Jackie.
I think the intention was getting in with the ordinance, got a bit running out of time.
Right. We, I guess we pretty much figured it'll be next year before it was there.
So, but at least given the opportunity to use, uh, the rest of your funding from this year.
I don't know if there's anything left. Is there?
There should be some.
Oh, oh, no. I was talking from these guys.
Oh, no.
Oh, yes, whatever we've got, you know, the. Has been dark to you. Let's put in the salaries or something.
Administrative costs.
Oh, there you go. That could catch up. Oh, we need to get slushful. Plus, you all got the notice about the, uh, Southern Main Regional having their, uh.
Saved the day.
Yeah.
I think we'll get an update on that as it gets a little closer. I will speak and.
That was the next, is this talking about, um? Well, that's, that's not.
This is, could have a speaker, but, um, sprawled, issues in the area. Trends, probably, I would assume, limited in active elements.
Could be.
Oh, this is, this is not the plan later.
No. No. No, I have those conditions, I used to sign the type, uh, but I don't have the minutes, so, thank you.
Thanks, Sonny. Appreciate you.
She's coming back.
Well, aren't we lucky? Who's the water bottle?
Mine.
Okay.
If it's blue.
Correct.
It's the one we kick often.
What's it?
He's always on the floor.
Now, this is where it makes for entertaining cable television. You know. Maybe, yeah, maybe that's what we should do. Get some logo wear and get some money back from some of these companies, you know?
I'm just drinking a Pepsi today.
And let me get regular commercial breaks where you all, you know, go out, you know, smoke, whatever we need to do. Cool down.
A lot of places.
Right in our tempers. Not with them.
You can put that PBN on streaming.
Yeah, I didn't think you guys were all, uh, had, you know, official stuff up there. Now, are those your own computers or the talents of towns?
We've been accused of communicating with each other during the meeting with them across the water.
Oh, really? Okay. Is there any?
Did truth do it?
No.
I was gonna say that.
And that's why we all had personal ones and we said, we need town ones. Because if somebody, for your information, wants to see what's on it, some of the personal stuff, so we've separated that out to town equipment, so.
Makes sense.
Yeah. You want to, just ask.
You can make a motion anytime you want to.
Can I ask you those two things?
After we, after we get a motion as second, yes.
I move, I move we accept the minutes of April fifth, April nineteenth, and after January sixth.
Whoa, wait a minute. There you did those two. Where are you at?
We're just looking.
We're on the fifth.
Where?
On April fifth.
We can get them from us and we've already cleared those.
Well, that's okay. I heard him say fifth. Is there a second?
I second the April fifth bottom.
Alright, good. Now, are there any changes to our comments, Bob?
You're, we're at the top of what would be page three, second line, we're talking about Mr. Cashin. And I guess I should ask the question first, if you read that sentence, there's a double negative there. I don't know if that's what Tom was trying to say or not.
It's probably sad.
Maybe he said it. I, that's why I'm questioning.
There's no problem with that.
There shouldn't be no problem.
Shouldn't be.
What's wrong with that?
Go ahead, second.
Second question, I had a backup a little bit earlier, which would be somewhere toward the bottom of the second page. Chip, you make your comment in reference to.
I wasn't even here.
Well, you're making, you pointed to this name anyway.
Let's get it in writing.
In reference to the, um, uh, Paladino deal. You said that we will get an answer to that. We will find out exactly in reference to the licenses. I don't know that we've gotten all that stuff back, but I'm assuming we have. Is that something that happened? It's, what exactly is that?
Mr. Vanel said, let's get it in writing. Mr. Paul said the health inspector would cover the retail meat going out. Mr. Vanel said, let's get that in writing.
And then further down, as Mr. Vanel said, we will get an answer to that. Uh, we will find out exactly. About the licensing.
So.
Alright. It would come to Ken. It wouldn't come to us.
Okay, so we, oh, so when you say weeds, it's, it's the town hall?
It's the royal weed. Not the town hall, nothing upstairs. Just our little feed them down here. This is stuff that's Ken, that Ken's gonna get before he gives the final occupancy or lets them, you know, do what they wanna do. Right, Sonny?
Okay.
Alright. Any other comments?